Good afternoon. The Committee on Water and Land is in its hearing notice of February 12th at 1:00 PM in room 229. And aloha, everyone. Welcome to our hearing today. This meeting, including the audio and video of remote participants, is being streamed live on YouTube. You'll find the links to viewing options for all Senate meetings on the live and on-demand video of the legislature's website. In the unlikely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing due to major technical difficulties, the committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business at 1:00 PM on Wednesday, February 17th, in this room 229 and on YouTube. The public notice will be posted on the legislature's website. And for the people attending remotely via Zoom, the testifier audio will be muted and video disabled until shortly before it is your turn to testify. And for those testifying, you will have two minutes. Members, we are in a very hurried day today because we have a joint right after. And let's proceed with the first testimony. The first bill on the list is SB 962, and this is relating to the Natural Energy Laboratory of Hawaii Authority. This transfers the NELHA operational authority over the Makai Research Pier located at the southeast corner of Oahu, authorizes the Director of Finance to issue the geobonds for the NELHA of Hawaii Authority to repair and upgrade the Makai Research Pier. Testifying for the University of Hawaii, I believe it's John Gauver.
Yes, Chair. Good afternoon, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'm here to provide support for this measure. We've submitted our written testimony and we stand on it, but I am here for questions.
Thank you. For DLNR, there are three of you on standby who is speaking on behalf of DLNR.
Good afternoon, Chair. This is Andrew Telio with the Land Division. The Land Division stands on its written testimony on Senate Bill 962, and we are here to answer any questions if needed.
Okay. Thanks, appreciated. Greg Barber from NELHA, are you there?
I'm here. Aloha. Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Greg Barber, Executive Director of the Natural Energy Lab. We submitted comments and we stand on our testimony, and we would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Greg. All right. For Makai Ocean Engineering, Anne Chung. Aloha, Anne. Unmute yourself, Anne.
Yeah, I just did. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Aloha, Chair, speaking for Makai Ocean Engineering. Makai has been on the pier since its founding for 48 years, and during which we've created tons of high-paying, high-skill jobs and millions in federal funding. We stand on our testimony and support and request an amendment to ensure that the current tenants are grandfathered into the transfer. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thanks, Anne. We do have two other supporters in this measure. Members, any questions with regards to SB 962? Okay?
I have a question.
Yes, Senator Agarwal.
This is for the university. What's the source of the geobonds? Is it being taken out of anyone's share of the geobonds that the governor has proposed?
I am not aware of it being taken out of anybody's share. I believe it is new monies, so to speak, that is being requested.
And I think if I read this correctly, Senator, I think they're looking at the geobonds that goes to NELHA. So under NELHA, if I'm correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's okay, Senator? Any more questions?
No, come again. It's coming out of NELHA's share. It's coming, it's going to be given to NELHA.
Well, this, this transfer seems like the management according to this is, NELHA will be managing this project, so. And Greg, if you want to add, jump in.
Yeah, we are not, we're not requesting any CIP funds this year or for this biennium.
Okay. So it depends then.
So this is just a, it's, so this is an ad, then? This is a geal ad? Okay. I guess I'll unmute.
Yes, it is. Okay. Any other questions? We'll move on then to SB 800. This is relating to the HCDAs or the Hawaii Community Development Authority, and this removes the county council as the nominating authority for members of this HCDA who serves as representatives of the Heia, Kalailoa, and Kakaako community development districts. We have, let's see, we have no testifiers. There are two oppositions to this measure. Any questions, members, on SB 800? Having no questions, we'll move on then to SB 1310, and this is relating to ocean stewardship. Oh, sorry. Sorry, 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 folks. Got a deleted item here. Okay. 1310, okay, 1173. Am I correct now? Okay. SB 1173, and sorry for those there, I don't know where I'm reading it, but SB 1173 relating to ocean stewardship, and this establishes the Ocean Stewardship Special Fund for Collection and Use of the Monies for the Conservation, Restoration, and Enhancement of the State's Marine Resources, and authorizes DLNR to collect the non-resident user fee for the use and enjoyment of the state's ocean resources. Okay, let's see. DLNR, I have two names who'll be speaking.
Yes, good afternoon, Chair Inouye and committee members. This is David Sakoto with Division of Aquatic Resources. We have submitted written testimony in support. Since that submission, we have been working with stakeholders to come up with some amendments to the language, and so we're happy to share that with the committee as well. They had some concerns, and we've agreed on how to address those concerns.
Okay. Thank you. Caitlin Maratea, testifying for Banyan Tree Divers Maui. Caitlin, are you there?
Senator, they are not present.
All right, thank you. Let's proceed then with the testimony of, for Extended Horizons Scuba, Victoria Martucci.
Aloha, Chair and committee, thank you. My name is Victoria, and I'm representing a small mom-and-pop scuba company that's been owner-operated by my husband and I since 1983. We completely believe in conservation, and it's what our business philosophy, our company ethos, and our business practices are centered on. My written testimony outlines our long-lived commitment to conservation. We support the idea of an ocean stewardship fund, however, we oppose SB 1173 in its targeting of only one industry in practice and in spirit. Over the decades, it's become kind of commonplace to hear the knee-jerk sentiment that, of course, ocean tourism businesses should pay because they're profiting from the resource. But ocean tourism is not alone in that. Many sectors make money off the resource, whether it's the fresh air, the beautiful sunshine, the rainbows, the waterfalls, and the ocean. Hawaii is a place that people want to come to. Air travel, tour buses, golf courses.
Nora, can you summarize, please?
Absolutely. There are many sectors that impact marine ecosystem health, and yet only one industry is being targeted by this bill. So I-
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have another testifier for Ocean Tourism Coalition, Zachary.
Good afternoon, everybody, Chair, Vice Chair. Thank you for the time. We submitted testimony in opposition to this bill as written, but we are actively working with Division of Aquatic Resources, industry, and other stakeholders to continue the discussion on this, discussion on this, and have some proposed amendments we're submitting to both this committee and the committee in the House. Other than that, ask our testimony.
Thank you very much. We do have additional supporters. We've got 12, we've got 13 in opposition. Members, any questions?
I have a question.
On SB 1173, Senator Misalucha.
For DLNR. So on your, in your testimony, you talked about the ocean stewardship fee, and this would be for tourists, right? The dollar per passenger, and that I note would interest the potential financial revenues that could be generated by this. In terms of timing, though, and I know you have done a whole study on it, would you continue to pursue this despite the pandemic and the fact that tourism is still at its, you know, low end right now? And hopefully, it's going to, you know, come back potentially, but in the interim?
Yes, and thanks for the question. We have been working with the Ocean Tourism Coalition to address that very concern, and one of the proposed amendments is to delay the implementation of this fee until 2024.
So why would you need the special fund if, right now, if the implementation is not until 2024?
We would like the ability to start the scoping and rulemaking process. As you know, that's a very lengthy process, and we want to have everything set up by then so that it's ready to go by 2024.
Okay. Does that answer your question? Yes.
Okay, any other discussion on SB 1173? Seeing none, members, we need to proceed then to SB 1176, and this is relating to the taking of natural resources, and this clarifies that any police officer or agent of the Department of DLNR has conferred police powers may, in the performance of their primary duties, inspect certain items for compliance with Title 12, Chapter 6D, 6E, and 6K HRS, and any rule adopted. DLNR, Jason, are you going to speak on behalf of the four of you? Proceed, please.
Yes, good afternoon, Chair and committee members. Jason Redula, Enforcement Chief for DLNR. The Department will stand on its written testimony in strong support of this measure, and I'll just point out that within our testimony, we do have recommendations for amendments. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Members, 1176, that's the only testifier. We do have additional support, eight of them, and we have nine oppositions and three presenting comments only. Any questions on SB 1176? Okay, hearing none. The Chair at this time will, will go into recess for decision-making and close out the first portion of the waterland hearing notice. The Committee on Water and Land is going into decision-making on its agenda of February 12th on SB 962. Members, Chair's recommendation is to pass with the amendments as recommended by the Makai Ocean Engineering, and in the event there's any technical amendments that would apply as well. Okay, any discussion? Hearing none. Senator Mr. Luca, Mr. Lucha, are you taking the vote for me?
Yes.
Proceed, please. Thank you.
Committee on Water and Land, as regards to SB 962, Chair recommends pass with amendments. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair Agarwal?
Aye.
Senator Misalucha votes aye. Senator Revere?
Aye.
Senator Favela?
Aye.
Your recommendations adopted, Chair.
Thank you. SB 800 relating to the Hawaii Community Development Authority. Chair's recommendation is to pass this measure as is. Any discussion? Hearing none. Senator Misalucha for the vote. Chair goes aye.
Senate Bill 800, Chair recommends pass as is. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair Agarwal?
Aye.
Senator Misalucha votes aye. Senator Revere?
Aye.
Senator Favela?
Aye.
Your recommendations adopted.
Thank you. SB 1173, this is the ocean stewardship measure. Chair's recommendation is to pass, actually, it's an SD-1 with technical amendments. Any discussion? Hearing none. Senator Misalucha for the vote.
SB 1173.
Chair's votes aye.
SB 1173, the Chair recommends pass with amendments. Are there any reservations? Any nays? Your, your recommendations adopted, Chair.
Thank you. SB 1176 relating to the taking of natural resources. Chair's recommendation is to amend this measure, taking the recommendation, the amendments by DLNR and the Attorney General, and include the word "and," A-N-D, after the semicolon on page, is that page two? Page two, line 19. Any discussions? Okay, hearing none. Yes, Senator Misalucha for the vote. Chair votes aye.
Senate Bill 1176, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair votes aye. Any reservations for the rest of the members? Any nays?
No, no vote for me.
No for Senator Favela.
Okay.
And your recommendations adopted, Chair.
Thank you. This concludes then the single hearing of water and land, and we'll gavel off and continue on in a minute. Okay, Senator Gabbard, are you ready? There you go. The Committee on Water and Land and the Committee on Agriculture and the Environment is on its second hearing. I take it back, it's a joint, so it's first joint hearing at 1:15 on February 12th. Today's Friday, aloha Friday, in room 229. Members, let's proceed then with SB 1168, and this is relating to the authorizing of the Department of Land and Natural Resources to lease pasture lands on terms that promote collaboration, collaborative beneficial use for forestry, wildlife, recreation, recreational, and food production process. Okay? I need the hearing notice for the second one. Okay, the hearing notice. Okay, okay, thank you. All right. First up, DLNR. We have several of you who's going to speak on DLNR.
Good afternoon, Chairs and members of the committees. My name is Ian Hirokawa, and I'm with DLNR Land Division. Department will stand on its testimony in support of the measure. I just want to note that, you know, the Department is in, has reached out and begun discussions with the Cattlemen's Council to see, you know, if some of these issues can be resolved. I, I am Kevin Moore from Land Division, and Irene Sprecher from Division Fortune Wildlife will be available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Department of Ag, Phyllis, are you going to speak on behalf of the Department?
Thank you. Good afternoon, aloha, Chair Inouye and Chair Gabbard, members of the committee. The Department stands on its written testimony, offering comments.
Thank you. We have Hawaii Farm Bureau, Brian Miyamoto, or representative, please?
Good afternoon, Chairs Inouye and Gabbard, Vice Chairs Keith Agarwal and Ishihara, and members of the committees. I'm Brian Miyamoto here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. Will stand on the written testimony, offering comments, and we do support the suggested amendments from the Cattlemen's Council. Thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Brian. Cattlemen's Council, Nicole Galassi, or representative?
Chairs, Vice Chairs, and members of the committee, thank you for hearing this measure. The Hawaii Cattlemen's Council stands on our, our testimony, offering comments. We do want to emphasize that we prefer SB 693 as a vehicle for solving Act 90 2003, but we are offering comments on this bill. As noted by DLNR, we are in touch with them, trying to work forward on a way to compromise on this. I just want to emphasize that our biggest concern is that we don't want this bill to be a way to stop any progress in Act 90 2003. We still think that that should be pursued even if this bill passes. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you. We do have additional supporters, four supporters, no opposition, and we have comments from four, four people. Any discussions? Any questions of any of those that testified? Members?
Can I ask?
Yes, Senator?
DLNR?
Senator Revere, DLNR.
Hi, thank you. Curious about your comments about the Cattlemen suggested amendments?
Good afternoon, committee, Chairs and Vice Chairs. Irene Sprecher with the Department of Land and Natural Resources. We had an opportunity to talk a little bit with the Hawaii Cattlemen's Council in advance of this meeting, and tried to clarify a few items that they had concerns about. We haven't had a chance to review the newest version of the recommendations from the Cattlemen's Council, but I think there's a number of them that we could probably accept a few that we might need to, or have additional revisions to, or some that might not be needed. I can't tell you what exactly those are without having a chance to look a little further into it, but I think that's something that we can work on.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other discussions on 1168? Members, then, let's move on to SB 693 relating to the transfer of non-agricultural parklands, and this requires DLNR and DOA to meet and identify the non-agricultural parklands that should be rezoned as those in the conservation district. Before we proceed, members, I did want to add that there were, if I didn't mention it, additional four supporters and no opposition. Did I say that? And comments of four on 1168. DLNR, testifying on 693.
Good afternoon, Chairs and members of the committee. Ian Hirokawa with DLNR Land Division. Department will stand on its written testimony in opposition to this measure. My, as you know, I would not withstand my previous comment on my previous comments of reaching out to the Cattlemen's Council. Again, myself, Kevin Moore, and Irene Sprecher are available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Let's see, DOA?
Thank you, Chair. The Department stands on its written testimony in support of the intent of the bill.
Okay, thank you. Farm Bureau?
Thank you, Chair. The Hawaii Farm Bureau will stand on its written testimony in strong support, just highlighting that we do believe that DOA is better equipped to manage these agricultural lands, and it's been nearly 18 years, and some of our farmers and ranchers are still waiting for the full implementation of Act 90 of 2003. Thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Cattlemen's Council, Nicole?
Nicole Galassi, testifying on behalf of the Cattlemen's Council. The Hawaii Cattlemen's Council stands on our support, strongly supporting this bill. Like the Farm Bureau mentioned, it has been way too long that farmers and ranchers have been waiting for these leases to be transferred. We support this bill because it still gives DLNR a chance to, to advocate for lands that they think they should keep to benefit their mission, but it does put a deadline on things, and I think that it, we believe that that's very necessary to be able to support agriculture going into the future for the ranchers and farmers to survive and thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Hawaii Crop Improvement Association, Emmanuel Zibak Kalam.
Aloha, Chairs, Vice Chairs, members of the committees. Emmanuel Zibak Kalam here on behalf of the Hawaii Crop Improvement Association. Will stand on our written testimony and support of this measure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Local Food Coalition, John Garibaldi. Okay, is John available? Otherwise, the last to testify, Kapapala Ranch, Lonnie Petrie. Lonnie, you out there?
Yes, Senator, they're not present.
All right. Okay, thank you. Members, any questions? Just to let you know, on this measure, 693, there are other supporters. There's 35 in support, five in opposition, and one with comments. Any questions with regards to SB 693? Seeing none, then, members, let's move on to the next measure, and I think this is still waterland in the lead. We'll proceed with, am I correct? SB 226 relating to land exchange. This temporarily allows the Governor to negotiate land exchanges to acquire lands suitable for long-term diversified agricultural production in return for state lands to be developed for affordable workforce and other housing. 226, SB Brian Miyamoto, Farm Bureau.
Thank you, Chair. The Hawaii Farm Bureau will stand on its written testimony in support of this measure.
Okay. Thank you, members. There are several other testifiers that supports this measure, and... Okay, any questions with regards to SB 226? Okay, seeing none? Anyone out there? Otherwise, we'll continue to proceed then with-
Chair, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Chair. DLNR submitted testimony in opposition to the measure. I'm not sure if you received it.
Here. Don't have the additional? Yep. Okay. You know what? You want to take this back then? Okay, thank you. Was that DLNR? Sorry.
Oh, no, no problem. Thank you. Thank you, Chair, Ian Hirokawa with DLNR Land Division. Department will stand on its written testimony opposing the measure and be available for any questions. Thank you.
Who's that from DLNR? I have a question.
Yes, is that Ian?
Yes, oh, speaking, yes.
So Ian, in your testimony, you pointed particularly to the East Kapale parcel. In addition to these, to this, are there other examples that would make sure that you're opposing? I mean, is that the only reason why you're opposed to this bill? Or are there other examples that would validate and rationalize your opposition?
Well, and as we noted in the testimony, I mean, the, the East Kapale parcels are the only parcels that is under DLNR management along the rail line that is really suitable for development. Of course, there are other state-owned parcels owned by, managed by other state agencies that we think would be affected, but, you know, we also noted, aside from the potential, you know, severe impact to the Department, that the, the way the bill is drafted, there were some concerns about, you know, assuring that there's no way to assure that affordable housing would actually be developed once the lands are, you know, transferred out in fee, and, and other issues we raised in our testimony. But the four parcels are the only ones, East Kapale are the ones under DLNR management.
Okay, thank you, Ian.
Office of Planning.
Aaron Citigal for the Office of Planning. OP stands on its written testimony, Chair.
Okay, I think I did call Brian. Okay, I think I did call Brian earlier, yep, members?
Yes.
Okay, um, for this measure, we have additional four, uh, supporting this measure, one opposition, and three with comments. Uh, members, any discussion, further discussion on SB 226? Okay, seeing none, we'll continue on then to SB 1292. And this is relating to the environmental impact statements. Uh, this examines the proposed drilling, construction, or use of a well on lands leased from the Department of Agriculture from the requirements of the Environmental Impact Statement law, provided that the land is being used to support agriculture and production, food production. DLNR?
Aloha, chairs and committee. DLNR stands on its written comments on this measure and are available for any questions. Mahalo.
Is that Kaleo?
Yes, Kaleo Manuel, deputy.
Right, thank you. Uh, Office of Hawaiian Affairs.
Uh, aloha, Chair. Inoue, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. Um, Kamakana Ferrera, the lead compliance specialist with Oahu, providing administrative testimony in opposition to this measure. Uh, we stand by our written testimony, but are available for any questions, should you have any. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Department of Agriculture?
Hello, and members of the committee. Filosima Bukuro Geyser, um, we stand on our written testimony, offering comments. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Hawaii Farm Bureau, Brian Miyamoto.
Thank you, Chair. The Hawaii Farm Bureau will stand on its written testimony in support of this measure.
Okay, uh, Sea Worm, Neil Fuji. Are you there?
Yeah, hi, I'm just, uh, ready, uh, Kaleo Manuel gave our testimony and I'll be here for comments, thank you, or questions, thank you.
Okay. Uh, Department of Health. Anyone from Department of Health? Hearing none, um, I think that's it, uh, with regards to, uh, SB 1292. We have, uh, two supporters, two opposition, and comments of three. Any discussion, any, uh, any questions of SB 1292? Senator Revere?
Um, Sea Worm, please. Kaleo.
Aloha.
Hi, um, I see that, um, there was something from Neil said, um, there would be testimony online. You mentioned there's submitted testimony. I, I don't see the submitted testimony. Could, could you maybe restate, uh, the position of, of the department?
Yeah, the, uh, thanks, Senator. Uh, the commission just provides and offers comments at this time on this measure, um, identifying some of the, the issues and potential concerns we have, um, regarding agricultural wells and the intent of, you know, our, our job to balance the protection of the resource with, with production of resource. Um, and, and then we
On those comments, because I don't, I don't have the written testimony. I don't have that testimony. So could you share your comments on the concerns?
Yeah, sure. Uh, in general, we highlight that the agricultural water needs, um, in the state is, is around, current use is about 20 million gallons, um, and about 434, uh, agricultural wells throughout the state. This doesn't also include, um, the water use from surface water systems. Uh, that's just purely groundwater use. Um, also, within the commission's purview in our community water use development plans, as well as the water, Hawaii Water Plan, um, our, our focus has always been to, um, utilize, you know, the best, the quality, match the quality of water source, um, with the quality of the water that's needed. Uh, usually agricultural or non-potable water, we prefer or look at utilizing uh, surface water or potentially even reused water, um, more than, uh, the groundwater resources that we have available. And so just, just analyzing alternatives is very important, uh, in balancing the protection of water resources. And, and that usually would come forward within an environmental review process. Um, also, some of our, you know, research and studies, uh, related to agricultural wells throughout the state kind of highlight the surrounding agricultural uses and potential impacts that those uses have on, um, on groundwater resources. And then lastly, our, our comments relate to, uh, that, you know, it, it is recommending an amendment to Chapter 174C, which is the Water Code. Uh, and, and we note that maybe a more appropriate place for this exemption to occur would be in Chapter 343 HRS, where environmental impact statements and, and the types of uses that are exempt from that law, uh, would be more appropriate. So those are our general comments on this measure.
So, so without a review, is there, um, potential for overdrawing, uh, beyond sustainable yields or, depending on the part of the, the state, I suppose, there might be a concern?
Well, the, we would, um, even in the development of any well, you're required to submit a well construction or pump installation permit. Uh, in water management areas like Oahu, uh, and Molokai, uh, we would require a water's permit application. Uh, as part of that process, we would review kind of how the well's designed, its proposed withdrawals, uh, its location and proximity to other adjacent wells, streams, resources. Um, so there is some review. Uh, there is, um, usually that review, especially for larger ag wells or other wells throughout the state, um, go through, uh, that environmental review process when it's triggered. And, and in that process, you have a lot more of a thorough review about potential impacts, um, both, you know, primary, secondary, and cumulative impacts of, of, of a well on withdrawals and, and aquifer itself.
And one last question, please, Chair.
Yeah, and now just, uh, for your information, Senator, um, the, it seems like that's a testimony from DLNR. I think that, uh, Kamakana had read earlier. It's exactly the same testimony, including the recommendations, um, that they ask, um, that it's more appropriate, uh, to, to set the, um, exemption within the Chapter 343 rather than, uh, Chapter 174. Am I correct, Neil?
Kaleo.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, yeah, Neil, Neil is one of my staff, so he's here.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, Kamakana, all right.
So, so then, i- if there were an exemption, um, process considered within, um, the department, uh, would they, would you have a chance to comment on, on exemption? The existing exemption processes that exist? Does that come by your desk for review?
Um, per 343, I'm pretty sure it's the first to act. So if, for example, a request, if this was the first, uh, trigger or the first time to come before the commission, uh, we would look at that and then determine whether or not the project is or isn't exempt from 343. Um, if, in this case, if we were to use this bill as an example, we would identify that it's located on state ag lands or state lands. And this is an ag lessee, for example. Uh, and we would more than likely require that the applicant show whether they've complied with Chapter 343 or not, uh, in order for us to continue to move forward with issuing and reviewing the well construction permit. So more than likely, we'd go back to DOA, actually. We would probably request whether or not that project has gone through 343 compliance, um, before it even, or as it's up, being applied for, as a well, the well permits being applied for, sorry.
Does it seem, does it seem conceivable, though, if it was a relatively minor use, um, subject to the circumstances, that an exemption would be warranted? Do you think that the existing warrant exemption processes are effective for the minimal usage?
Mahalo for the question, Senator. I, I think, um, Chapter 343 HRS already allows for agencies to determine what projects could, and could not be exempted, and that list could be held by any agency. At this point, we don't even, the commission currently, um, in our exemption, we just updated our, uh, exemption classes, and these are not part of our exemption classes. So we would have to review this, uh, potentially update our exemption requests or list, uh, and then determine whether or not, um, we believe that the, there is no significant impact and it could be exempted from, uh, Chapter 343. At this time, I, I can't tell you, um, what those criteria would be and what we, what it would, what we would recommend. I do want to highlight
I'm sorry, but there is that process, um,
There, there is a process.
Should the department wish to establish a, uh, an exemption process, yeah?
Yes.
So, okay, that exists. Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Uh, just to add, though, at the outset, um, the determination, when you look at this, it depends on, depends on the water quality as well, Neil, whether it's non-potable or portable that water.
Chair, the, uh, trigger would be use of state lands, I think, in this case. So it has really nothing to do with the quality of water resources that are being used, um, that would require 343 evaluation.
Okay, that's very it. Uh, thank you. Any other questions, uh, with regards to, uh, SB 229? I'm sorry, 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 1292. Okay, members, uh, we have, um, with this measure, uh, two in support, two opposed, and three with comments. Um, then, uh, we'll, let's move on to, uh, SB 367, uh, relating to water quality. And this waives the requirement for Section 401, water quality certification for certain small-scale beach restoration projects authorized by the Department of La- Nat, Land and Natural Resources. DLNR, uh, Sam, on Lemo, are you going to testify for the department?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Uh, thank you, Chair Inoue and Vice Chair Keith Agaradon. Sam Lemo for Suzanne Case. We strongly support this measure. Um, try to keep the testimony short and sweet. Thank you.
Okay, uh, this is an admin bill, yeah, is it?
No, it's not.
Okay, all right. Uh, next up, let's, uh, call on an individual, Andrew Wiegland, then. Is Andrew available?
Yes, Chair, thank you. Uh, I'm, I'm part of the Hawaii Shore and Beach Preservation Association, and we strongly support this measure. Um, with sea level rise and chronic erosion going on, we're, we're challenged to find effective ways to, to mitigate erosion and, uh, keep the beaches healthy. Uh, one of the things that this, uh, program will do is that, uh, it, it helps, um, oh, with ecosystem-based management approaches, we can conserve the beaches of Hawaii. And it's a very, uh, oh, it's a very nature-friendly approach. And being able to, um, oh, waive the water quality certification for these projects, it'll help streamline the whole process. And, uh, we stand by our testimony that was provided.
Thank you. Any questions on 367? Uh, Sam, I have a question, um, with regards to, would this assist or help with the, uh, the sand berm over at Hilo Bay, uh, next to Suisun? You know, the entry for the small boat harbor, uh, every year, um, when, um, the sand ends up taking away the pathway for the boaters? And, um, usually, there's a clean out and the sands are just kind of piled up and eventually, uh, is taken away or, you know. So could, with this measure, would that help if it's a cleanup on the sand and reuse?
Yeah.
In other areas?
Uh, yes, yes, Chair. You, you summarized it well. The sand is, uh, the area is drenched and the sand gets taken away for ball fields and stuff. That's damaging the beach ecosystems, narrowing our beaches. This permit, this, this, uh, waiver would allow us to fully implement the small-scale beach restoration program and then streamline permitting to move that sand back up on the beach, if that's a safe thing to do.
Yeah, that would add because it's right next to the canoe landing.
Yeah.
And so, you know, there's, of course, uh, losing the sand as well. And, um, okay, that, 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 that helps. That helps the Department of getting rid of the, uh, sand and if it can be cleaned out and reused. I see, uh, a hand raised. Is that, uh, Senator Acasio? Question four? You can unmute yourself, Senator.
Sorry, Chair, um, yeah, I was having trouble unmeeting. But, um, okay, so question of what is the definition of small scale? Is, um, is the first question.
Okay, uh, Sam?
Yeah, we, uh, we hyperlinked, uh, the Small-Scale Beach Restoration Programmatic Environmental Assessment in the testimony. Um, we're, uh, right now, the, the upper limit is 25,000 cubic yards of sand.
And how much, um, generally, do we know how much is taken out of, um, the Hilo Bay?
Hilo Bay? I would say I would say, you know, anywhere from 2,000 or 3,000 cubic yards at a shot. Yeah.
Uh, what, um, uh, speaking of the, the Suisun-Hilo Bay section, um, of beach, uh, what, what part of the toxicity that we know of in the sand, um, heavy metals, et cetera, um, plays into this application process?
We have a, um, the, the EA outlines all of the, the best management practices, everything that would be compliant with the Clean Water Act. Um, the only change we're asking for is that we don't have to go through a 401 water quality certification. If we believe there might be toxicity, we would certainly ask that it be tested. It's, I'm not saying we're going to test every single pile of sand that we move. Everything is basically, uh, case by case.
So does this, um, this circumvent that? This waiver circumvent that, the need for the EIS? For the EA?
The EA basically serves as the compliance with Chapter 4, 343. Yeah.
Okay. That, uh, answers your question, Senator. Any other questions? Okay, uh, do you see anybody waving their hand out there?
No.
Okay. All right, then, uh, members, this concludes, uh, the water land, um, lead on this measure. Uh, we'll continue on with, um, Senator Gabbard.
Aloha.
Aloha.
Okay, so we'll, um,
Are we on the break room now?
No, we don't need
We want to gavel up, we can gavel in the 120.
Okay.
Okay.
Range?
Actually, we're continuing. One second, uh, we'll short recess.
Okay. All right, ga- uh, gaveling in the joint AEN water land uh, hearing, the 120 hearing. And, uh, we've already gone through the housekeeping, but I just wanted to mention one thing. And I, unlike the event that we have to abruptly end this hearing due to major technical difficulties, uh, the committee convened to discuss any outstanding business at 1:44 PM on February 17th during our AEN VO, uh, via video conference time slot, and a public notice will be posted on the legislature's website. So we'll start off with, um, SB 340, uh, relating to agricultural lands. Amends certain land subdivision and condominium property regime laws related to agricultural land as recommended pursuant to Act 278 Session Laws of Hawaii 2019 to ensure condominium and property regime projects within the agricultural district are used for agricultural purposes. And let's see. First up, testify is, um, DCCA. Uh, Carol Rishulu with, uh, DCCA, Real Estate Commission.
Thank you, Senator. Uh, my name is Carol Rishulu. Good afternoon, members of the committee and the chairs. I am a staff member with the real estate branch. I'm testifying on behalf of Michael Pang, who's the chair of the Hawaii Real Estate Commission. The commission stands on its written testimony in support of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Uh, next is Rodney Funakoshi, Planning.
Hi, good afternoon, Senator. Rodney Funakoshi from the State Office of Planning. Uh, OP stands on its written testimony in strong support of this bill. Mahalo.
Thank you, Rodney. Next is Filosima Bukuro Geyser, Department of Ag.
Morris Atha on behalf of the Department of Ag. Um, the department, uh, stands on its written, some written testimony in strong support of this bill as a member of the stakeholders group that, uh, put, put this, these recommendations as a member of the stakeholders group that uh put, put this, these recommendations together. Thank you.
Thank you, Morris. Next is Brian Miyamoto from Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Thank you, Chair. The Hawaii Farm Bureau stands on its written testimony in support of this measure.
Okay. Uh, members, any questions? It's all the testifiers. Uh, let me start off with the questioning. I've got a question for Rodney with Office of Planning. Uh, Rodney, could you just speak, uh, just give us a, a summary of the working group uh that the Office of Planning led in coming up with this legislation?
Thank you. Uh, yeah, we had a broad stakeholders group, maybe about twenty-five participants. So we included not only legislators, senators, and representatives, but also all the major agencies that have a role in regulating agricultural land on Oahu. So in particular for this, you know, we had the Real Estate Commission, the Land Use Commission, the City's Department of Planning and Permitting, and we had the Department of Agriculture. And so along with us, and then as well, we had private, private interests. So including the Hawaii Farm Bureau, um, private landowners, including, and farmers, including the Catalans Council, uh, community schools. And so we had, we had a very broad, broad-based group that we developed these recommendations, starting off with, you know, what we wanna try to achieve and protect relative to the agricultural interest, and then try to address some of the concerns uh with the subdivision and CPR process. So thank you.
Thank you. Members, any other questions?
I have a comment, Chair. I have a comment, um, or a question. Um, uh, I, I was, and I'm probably Office of Planning as well. We've had over the years a lot of issues with regards to housing and the coffee fields in South Kona. Um, and I'm just wondering if um this would assist the counties as well in making sure that um they follow the guidelines, but also that it's permitted.
Uh, okay, I'm not familiar with the exact nature of the question. But, you know, one of the, the main issues we face in uh agricultural land is the definition of what is a bona fide farm and a farm dwelling. And so what this does is tries to clarify and provide uh, you know, a definition for what, what constitutes a farm dwelling. So, you know, it does provide a specific income criteria uh in order to determine whether, you know, the farm is the primary activity as well as, and dwelling basically an accessory use to the farm.
I think it will help, it'll help Hawaii County because that was an issue, and they've been denying housing on uh free uh in the years past with regards to housing. Um, so I think it, I think this will work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Any other questions, members? All right, moving on to the next measure, SB nine ninety-seven, which allows county governments to enter into private-public partnerships for the services and transferring or joint venturing of one or more of their wastewater treatment facilities to a private entity or its wholly-owned nonprofit management entity with the delivery of those services. Okay, first up is Department of Taxation.
Aloha, Chairs, Vice Chairs, Member of the Joint Committees. Tipton Sathan on behalf of Department of Taxation. We stand on our testimony providing comments and available for question. Thank you.
Okay. Next up is Ramsey Mansour with the Hawaii County Department of Environmental Management.
Yes, aloha, Chair, Sena, and um, and members of the Joint Committee. I'm the Director of Environmental Management Department and of the County of Hawaii. The County of Hawaii is the largest county with cesspool and numbers and more needed attention to upgrade and maintain its failing wastewater system within the state of Hawaii that requires approximately double the county's entire annual budget to achieve. This bill will allow the counties that owns public wastewater systems to be able to have multiple options with the private sectors secure their required state-mandated credentials. Think outside the box on how to utilize the latest design, construction, operation technologies, flexible financing for capital and major maintenance projects at a cost-saving measures with a clear delegation of responsibilities and risks for reclaiming our major and precious resources for our survival. Therefore, the department stands on the submitted written testimony and strongly support this bill and with the recommendation as amended by the Attorney General's Office. I stand by for any questions you may have.
Okay, mahalo Ramsey. Next is Randy Pereira with HGEA.
Good afternoon, Chairs, Vice Chairs, Michelle Curiehar and members of the committees. Michelle Curiehar Klein on behalf of the Hawaii Government Employees Association and our Executive Director, Randy Pereira. We stand in strong opposition to this measure. You do have our written testimony before you, but for your edification, I did want to highlight several reasons for our opposition. First off, I wanted to make it very clear that this bill is a repeat, a literal repeat of the Maui HHSC privatization. When you look at the Attorney General's testimony, you'll see that much of their comments um relate to the irrelevance of the, of statutory citations to wastewater treatment plants. This bill has worse consequences than privatizing health facilities because wastewater is a critical utility that every resident relies on daily. This further, this transfer is, transfers to privatize can be done with no public notice, no input or consent. This is simply unacceptable. Secondly, we live in an island state with limited natural resources, and therefore we do support the need to incorporate emerging technologies. However, several local counties are already doing this. They are already incorporating new technology without relinquishing total control of their operations. And we are in support of a true partnership that would pursue that route. Third, your public workforce is not a quote, this is a direct quote from the preamble, "a logistical and structural issue that needs to be surmounted." Your local workforce has and will adapt when given and provided resources, training, and support. And that speaks to um having a true partnership where a private operator, I'm sorry, where a private entity can come in and give training to your public workforce so that the public workforce will continue to execute. Lastly, we are aware of municipalities in Detroit, Pittsburgh, and Atlanta where water resources have been privatized with negative results. Therefore, we respectfully request your deferral of this measure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's the, the end of the testifiers. Members, are there any questions?
Uh, actually, um, Chair?
Yes.
If I may, testify? I think we submitted testimony. This is uh Mayor Mitch Roth from Hawaii County.
Hi, Mayor. You're not on the approved list, but I will go ahead and let you testify.
Thank you. I, you know, I, I think it's really important for me to testify in light of HMSA's uh, HEA's uh testimony. You know, uh, I'm blessed to be the mayor of uh, an island that has not just some of the, the hardest-working county employees, but I think some of the hardest and most dedicated employees in the state. And, you know, part of my responsibility is to protect our, our island's people, but also to protect our employees. And I think this bill goes to that, and we strongly support it. What we're looking at on Hawaii Island is fixing our wastewater systems, which are several hundreds of millions of dollars. We're not talking about taking away jobs. Um, we're talking about making sure we can protect our island, protect our island resources. We recently were looking at the Kealakei wastewater system where a lot of people were talking about water going into our ocean and polluting our ocean. One of the greatest responsibilities of government is to protect its natural resources. As we're looking at those bills, we were given quotes of two hundred million dollars and up to fix that system. Luckily, we have one of the greatest uh, you know, Department of Environmental Managers, Ramsey Mansour is on here, who's come up with a different solution. We are under an EPA um mandate to fix our systems in Pahala and Naualahu. We went out and the last administration's solution to this was to create a system that would cost each of the people in, in that neighborhood, in those areas, uh, over two hundred thousand dollars to put a new system in. Um, we're talking about houses that aren't even worth that much. People that are hard-working employees. A lot of those people work for our counties. As we move forward, uh, our Director Mansour talked about the need to get off of septic and uh, off of cesspools. Hawaii Island has more cesspools than any other islands. As we move forward, we need to reclaim our water and protect our environment. And that's gonna require us to build wastewater facilities. That cost of over two hundred million dollars.
Mayor, sorry, I gotta cut you off.
Okay, uh, we strongly support and we ask for your support. Thank you very much for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Uh, members, are there any questions? I have a question for, starting off for Ramsey Mansour. I just wanna clarify something, uh, Ramsey. You were, I think you said it at the very end of your testimony, but you, you were able to connect with the Attorney General's Office, and you're comfortable with the suggestions to improve the bu- the, the bill that they made. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just double-checking. All right. Any other questions, members?
I have a question, Mike.
Okay.
So this is, this is for either the um, the mayor or to Mr. Mansour. Wh- what's the alternative to doing a bill like this? I mean, how, how else would Big Island be funding the improvements that are needed?
Thank you very much, Senator Agarwal. Now, I, I'm gonna answer part of this uh, because we are looking at other ways of funding. Um, right now with EPA, um, they've given us a slight break, but in three months' time, they were supposed to start uh fining us. Uh, one of the options, which I, I think is totally unacceptable, is to put it on the, the backs of hard-working people in our county. At Ramsey, you can give a figure. I think it was over two hundred thousand dollars per household for people that may be earning like forty uh thousand dollars a year. Uh, the other thing that we're looking at, and we are pursuing grants, uh, we haven't gotten any successful, but the last administration's option was to put it on the backs of hard-working, you know, families, which i- is just unacceptable to me.
Yeah, in addition to that, if I may, um, most of these waste treatment plan, for us to look at different alternatives, there's a lot out there that privately designed, constructed, and they have a patent on these systems. So sometimes they could come in with actually zero, zero capital to the taxpayers, and they come in with their patented design system, they put it in at a lower cost, and they oversee the operation and maintenance of it. So that also another way to be able to fund these projects with this type of partnership and entrepreneur innovative ideas. Otherwise, um, to be honest with you, the county budget currently uh at four hundred million, which is only to support one project, which uh Mayor Mitch has mentioned, about two hundred, on average, two hundred to four hundred thousand dollars per sewer connection per house. And most of these homes don't even abraise at that, at that cost. So as you see, we have to look outside the box to come up with innovative solutions at a lower cost.
Thank you. Senator Acasio?
Uh, Mr. Mansour, um, what's the feasibility of um these private companies using, utilizing local labor for, for the projects?
Yeah, it's pretty high. Actually, it's stated in the bill that they could transfer their current employees and use local forces. Uh, because they come in with their patent system. They come install the patent system at a lower cost, and they're gonna hire people within the community.
Because that's pretty much why I'm asking, is to see if we can create a, a stronger alliance between the blue and the green, you know, the, the, the workforce of labor and environment and improving our environment rather than uh, what I see as a continual pit against each other, and I think it, it's much more productive if we, if we unify that. Um, and, and of course, support our local workers.
And yes, definitely. In addition to that, please let me mention something that with the wastewater, there's certain credential that uh the workers need to have, which is certification that required by, mandated by federal and state requirements. So you have to put at least first two years to be able to qualify, to be able to take the test, to be a grade operator one. And then you have to move from certification one, grade one, two, three, and four. Well, some of these facilities, you know, and that's why we have to make it open to the public because sometimes you cannot just fi- find that credentials.
Okay, Senator Rhodes, she had a question?
Yeah, for, for Mayor Roth. First, uh, glad to see you back at work, glad you're feeling well enough to uh put up with us, put up with our questioning. Um.
Senator.
So I, it looks to me like the bill allows for um for, for for-profit companies to come in. And I guess it's not entirely clear to me why in the long run, I, I can see that in the short run, it might be cheaper to, to bring in somebody who's got readily available capital. But in the long run, they have to make money. So how does it pencil out, you know, fifteen, twenty years down the road?
You, you know, it's a, a great question. On Hawaii Island, we actually have um private and public that's actually doing work already. The private ones uh and Waikoloa, um, generally taken care of by the, the hotels. Um, and it's amazing, they're not just um getting rid of the wastewater, they're actually recycling that wastewater, and they've made it into a business where they can reclaim the water. That is something I think, not just Hawaii County, I think all of us need to do to be sustainable, is we need to make sure that we're reusing our water. And generally, you use that on golf courses or on farms and, and things like that. And so there's a way of actually um reselling the water to take off some of the price, you know, some of the, the cost to the consumer. And in fact, it's already happening on Hawaii Island. Um, uh, pretty much on the Kohala coast, there's, there's a lot of that happening already.
So, so why can't we do that? Why can't the county or the state do that?
Um, well, you know, the two hundred million dollars to, to build the system. Um, if the state is willing to give us that money, um, we, we'd be happy to take the money and, and, and do it on a, on a private lo- on a public level. Um, but, you know, we don't have those funds. So, you know, it, it's kind of a, it's a catch-twenty-two for us. We're not trying to take away union jobs. I, I, I just wanna, you know, make sure that, that's clear. We, we have great people that work for our county. It's, we're in a catch-twenty-two situation where we're being forced to do something. We can't afford it, and we have another solution where, you know, we are able to afford it. And, you know, yes, if, if we could have the, the money upfront to do that, that'd be great. Uh, and we can, you know, reclaim the water, and we can build a system to reclaim the water. We just don't have that opportunity right now.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Chair. Thanks, Mayor.
Anyone else?
Senator Missalucha has her hands up.
Okay, Senator Missalucha.
Yeah, um, is Michelle still around, HGE?
Hi, Senator, yes, I am.
Hi, Michelle.
Hi.
So as you can see, there's widespread support for this concept of public-private ventures, right? And I'm just wondering, um, and in some of the instances that I've seen, um, and I know you've alluded to how um it's not just about jobs, but it's also about government transparency. But I would underscore the fact that it's also about jobs. So I'm wondering if we have a private labor agreement, which has been done in many cases where there's public-private um ventures. Would HGE or any of the unions be amenable to that? And would allow or would be more supportive of this concept?
Senator, I think that the director alluded appropriately to the language in the bill that um states that with a transfer to a pu- a private entity, that will cease a public employee's public employment. So what we had learned with the Maui privatization is that many employees enter into public service, career-focused, um, with the long-term benefits in mind, inclusive of a pension and healthcare coverage. And when, when a system is privatized, the employee who's caught midstream loses um the full benefit. And so I think that that is one very big concern that we raise um about privatization. So yes, there are many impacts to the employees and the workforce. many impacts to the employees and the workforce. So in the long run, I think many senators are very aware that on Maui, Kaiser Premanente and its subsidiary did maintain the workforce. I would say the vast majority of the workforce, but they were all transitioned to Kaiser, Kaiser Medical Plan and the Kaiser 401K Plan. And they lost, um, access into the employee retirement system and the EUTF, uh, for government employees. So through that process of the Maui privatization, we were unable to make changes to the ERS system and how they calculate credible years of service to benefit the employees who would have stayed on. Um, and we were unable to alleviate, um, any of those employees who would have been affected. So in essence, what we were seeing is that two pensions did not equal one, because you don't have the long-term benefit of being in the system. So I would say that first off. Secondly, um, you know, I, I do recognize that there are several counties who have chimed in with their support of this measure. Um, however, it, it seems that the issues are predominantly focused on, in Hawaii County. And, um, however, this measure does have statewide impact. So in theory, the city and county, if passed in this form, the city and county of Honolulu could also seek to privatize its wastewater treatment plants. And so with blanket, with blanket action, um, such as this, we, there, we cannot support, um, the, the permissibility of any county at a whim to enter into agreement to privatize its facilities.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, members. We will move on to the next measure. And that is SB 1313 relating to sport fish. And this requires the Department of Ag to allow for the permitted importation of northern largemouth bass and butterfly peacock bass into Hawaii. Requires the Division of Aquatic Resources to establish a pilot project to restock the Wahihua Public Fishing Area with northern largemouth bass, butterfly, butterfly peacock bass, or both. First up to testify is Phyllis, uh, Chimabukor Geyser from Department of Ag.
Good afternoon, Chair Gabbard, and committee members. Morris Atta, behalf of the Department of Agriculture, will stand on our support, offering comments, uh, on this measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Morris. Next is Brian Nielsen from DLNR.
Aloha, Chair Gabbard. Brian Nielsen, Administrator of Division of Aquatic Resources. Uh, we stand on our written testimony, appreciating the intent, intent and offering some comments, and we're available for questions. Thank you.
Okay. And then we have David Sakota, also from DLNR.
Hi, Senator, they're not present.
Okay. So that's it on the testifiers. Members, any questions? Senator Nishihara?
Uh, Chair, um, just, just one second, just a reminder that it's, uh, we're down less than 15 minutes for decision-making. Just to prepare ourselves for that as well. Proceed. Thank you.
Senator Nishihara? Your mic, Clarence?
Oh, let me get it on my, okay. Am I clear now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. It's a question to Morris Atta?
Yes.
You know, the, uh, the varieties of, the fish that you're speaking of, um, would they present any possible, uh, problems for any other species that we currently have in, in, in the, in the, uh, the lake?
But I guess our comments actually speak to that question, because, um, you know, we've been informed that they are already in there, in, in the lake, but, um, they haven't been assessed in terms of what their impacts are. And, and, and that's been part of the, I guess, the issues, why there's been delays in, um, getting approvals. And, you know, this, uh, this process requires, you know, two, two steps, basically. That initial review and approval of the, of the species. And then the second would be approval, um, by, uh, Division of Aquatic Resources, as to whether or not they will allow it to be put into the lakes. They control, you know, uh, those state waters. So our comments kind of go, go speak to the question that you raised. We, we're not sure, and we can't answer that question right now, and that's, that's the comment that we're making.
Okay. Chair?
Thank you.
Any other?
Senator Rivera. Senator Rivera.
Aloha, uh, Chair, this is, uh, Gil Rivera. Could I, uh, ask a question for Dar to?
Absolutely, Senator.
Thank you. Um, isn't there a problem with, is it a bass or a species of bass in Waialoa River over on Kauai that has kind of wiped out the, uh, the native species?
I think it's smallmouth bass. I, I'd have to double-check that, but I know that smallmouth bass is, is, you know, considered invasive in some of the water bodies in Kauai. Uh, but I'd have to get back to you to verify that, but I think, I think that's what I've heard.
Thank you. The, the point of asking that was that, uh,
That's, um, under Department of Ag's authority. We, you know, we would like to see some language that, you know, didn't put them on a list to allow import, but, you know, maybe it was, um, you know, just for this purpose, or just by the department. Um, some, some conditions, um, to make sure that, you know, these species aren't introduced or imported for other water bodies, um, would, would give us a lot of assurance of, you know, avoiding any negative impacts.
Thank you, and I know we're really under the gun for time, so.
Yeah, we are.
I'll yield, but I was curious about DOA's thoughts on the getting it through the list, if they're actually to go through the process. I'll just float that out there. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, members, we are on a hard 230 stop here, so we're gonna go into a, we're not gonna go into a breakup.
Chair, my recommendation, um, is that because you and I, we already decided that, um, I think more or less, some of our recommendations, why don't we just continue on with the recommendations?
That sounds good.
Okay.
Let's turn it up.
Yeah, okay. Um, members, we're going to go into decision-making. Uh, on the first portion of this joint, uh, on the waterland and, uh, the agriculture and, uh, uh, energy. Captain of the ship, I didn't understand you.
We're on the first agenda, 115 agenda.
Yeah, we're, we're on the, uh, the 115 agenda. Okay.
Hi, Senator, that was Senator Nishihara, sorry.
Okay, all right. Uh, members, uh, hearing that, uh, let's proceed then, um, uh, and Senator, uh, Gabbard, um, as well. Uh, both chairs recommend that on SB 1168, that we'll pass this mess, uh, this, uh, measure, uh, with amendments. Uh, and this includes, of course, the technical amendments as well, and include the Kettleman's amendments, uh, as in the testimony. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, um, Senator Gabbard, shall we go ahead with the votes and on waterland? All right, we'll proceed then, members, waterland. Uh, Chair's recommendation, uh, to pass with amendments. Uh, Chair, uh, votes aye. Senator Missalucha for the vote.
Committee on Water and Land, as regards to SB 1168, Chair recommends pass with amendments. Um, any Chair votes aye? Any nays or reservations? Your recommendation is adopted, Chair.
Thank you. Uh, SB 693. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Uh, AEN.
Same recommendation for AEN. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair?
Aye.
Senator Casio?
Aye.
Senator Rhodes?
Aye.
Senator Favela?
Aye.
Measure passes. Thank you, members.
Thank you. Um, proceeding with SB 693, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments with the Kettleman's recommendation, uh, as well. Uh, and another, um, recommendation from SMA is to amend page four, line 20, to apply to the 20, not 2021, 2022 year, and of course, adding technical and non-substantive amendments. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, uh, Ms., Senator Missalucha for the vote on SB 693 with amendments. Vote, Chair votes aye.
Senate Bill 693, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Uh, Chair votes aye. Vice Chair Keith Agarwal?
Aye.
Senator Missalucha votes aye. Senator Rivera?
Aye.
Senator Favela?
Aye.
Your recommendation's adopted, Chair.
Same recommendation. Uh, any discussion, members? Chair votes aye. Chair Nishihara?
Aye.
Senator Casio?
Reservations?
Senator Rhodes?
Reservations.
Senator Favela?
Reservations.
Measure passes. Thank you, members.
Okay, uh, thank you for SB 226, um, relating to the land exchange. Chair's recommendation is to pass this measure as is. Um, any discussion? Hearing none, Senator Missalucha.
SB 226, Chair's recommendation is to pass unamended. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair Keith Agarwal?
Aye.
Senator Missalucha votes aye. Senator Rivera?
Aye.
Senator Favela?
Aye.
Your, uh, measure's adopted.
Same recommendation for AEN. Any discussion? Chair votes aye. Vice Chair Nishihara?
Aye.
Senator Casio?
Aye.
Senator Rhodes?
Reservations.
Senator Favela? Senator Favela?
Reservations.
Thank you. Measure passes.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, SB 1292. Uh, both, uh, chairs recommend that this measure is, uh, passed with amendments, and the amendments would be the, uh, recommendation, um, from DLNR regarding the changing of the chapters on this measure. And we'd like to defect the date to July 1st, 2050 as well. Uh, any discussion?
This is 1292?
Oh.
Yes, 1292.
1292, yes. Okay, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, uh, Senator Missalucha for the vote for waterland.
Senate Bill 1292, Chair recommends pass with amendments. Uh, Chair recommends aye. Any nays or reservations?
Reservations.
So Senator Rivera, reservations. Anyone else?
No.
No for Senator Favela. Your, uh, recommendation's adopted, Chair.
Same reservation, uh, same recommendation for AEN. Any discussion? Uh, Chair votes aye. Are the members present? Are there any votes with reservations or?
Reservations for Rhodes.
Aye.
Senator Casio?
No vote for Casio?
No.
Me as well.
Reservations for Nishihara?
No.
Okay. The measure passes. Members?
Uh, thank you. Uh, SB 367 relating to water quality. Uh, both chairs recommend that this measure is passed, um, with, uh, as is, and of course, uh, in the event that, uh, we need to add technical non-substantive amendments, so an SD one.
Yes.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Senator Missalucha.
SB 367, Chair recommends pass unamended. Chair votes aye.
No, no, the, the recommendation is to pass with amendments.
I thought you said as is.
He said text, right?
Uh, the text.
Oh, text, okay.
So there's an SD one, yes.
All right. I stand corrected. So Chair votes aye. Vice Chair Keith Agarwal?
Aye.
Senator Missalucha votes aye. Senator Rivera?
Aye.
Senator Favela?
No.
Your recommendation's adopted, Chair.
Same recommendation for AEN. Any discussion, members? Chair votes aye. Vice Chair Nishihara?
Aye.
Senator Casio?
Aye.
Senator Rhodes?
Aye.
Senator Favela?
No.
The measure passes. Okay, so we can, um, go to decision make. Yeah, uh, Chair, for the 120?
Yes, proceed.
Okay, SB 340 relating to Ag lands. We've confirmed the recommendation on this one, uh, SB 340 is to pass as is. Any discussion? Senator Casio?
Um, so my question is, um, if to amend, uh, if we could amend section F2, um, that says no permanent or temporary dwellings or farm dwellings, including trailers, campers, are constructed on the leased area, um, to allow for small dwellings so farmers can live near their crops and also reduce crime. Doesn't have to be exactly worded like that, but basically the idea of what, um, Senator Inouye was asking about with the coffee farmers, so that there is approval for small-scale, um, living, um, abilities, as opposed to the gentleman type of estate.
You know?
If it's considered. I, I didn't get to discuss it, I'm sorry, in, in, because we didn't break out, so.
Right. Uh, I would prefer, if you would, uh, like to include that in the committee report.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
If you can send us the language, then we'll go ahead. So, thank you. Uh, Chair votes aye. Vice Chair Nishihara?
Aye.
Senator Casio?
Reservations.
Senator Rhodes?
Aye.
Senator Favela?
Reservations.
Thank you, members.
Okay, same recommendation, Committee on Water Lands. Any discussion? Senator Missalucha for the vote. Chair goes aye.
Committee on Water and Land, SB 340, Chair recommends pass as is. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair Keith Agarwal?
Aye.
Fight, uh, Senator Missalucha votes aye. Senator Rivera?
Aye.
Senator Favela?
Reservations.
Your recommendation's adopted, Chair.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to SB 997, having to do the wastewater treatment facilities. The chair has, having conferred, uh, the recommendation would be to pass SB 997 with amendments. Actually, there's quite a few amendments, uh, that are based on the AG's testimony, uh, with clarifying input from Hawaii County, as they were the drafters of the legislation. So this, uh, we want to move the proposed amendments from chapter 340B to chapter 46. Uh, remove unintended references to Hawaii Health Services Corporation in the proposed amendments to HRS. And then the reference to certificate of need and the definition of private entity will be revised to a requirement for all necessary certifications. And appropriately revise the definition of resource recovery facility in chapter 340A to explicitly encompass other resources the county desires to recover, such as water. And then reconcile potential inconsistencies between the definitions of quote-unquote "private entity" and quote-unquote "transferred facility." Uh, correct the typo, errors, and omissions in section 340B dash BA and 340B dash GE and 340B dash I, might be an L. Uh, work with the Hawaii County to craft a definition of quote-unquote "full-scale resource recovery facilities." Delete sections 340B dash B, capital B, small b, one as unnecessary. Delete references to Act 262, section laws, session laws of Hawaii, uh, 1996. Revise section 340B dash HB2 to clarify that the licensing and accreditation requirements applied to the private entity's wastewater operators, not the entity itself. Adopt the auditing requirement. Adopt the auditing requirements of HRS section 323F dash 22 as a standalone provision in the proposed amendments, rather than incorporating them by reference. Uh, revise the proposed amendment to HRS section 89 dash 85 from quote the counties and unquote, to quote the counties or unquote. With an appropriate amendment to the title of that section. And then based on DOTAX's testimony for ease and administration, we will be taking their language to the new section 340B dash HB6 on page 14, starting on line 14, related to tax clearances. And then we'll also give DOTAX the authority to mandate the electronic filing of the tax clearance application. Electronic filing of tax documents significantly reduces the administrative burden of processing paper documents. And there's also some tech amendments. Any discussion? Chair votes aye. Uh, let's see. Vice Chair Nishihara?
Aye.
Senator Acasio?
Reservations.
Senator Rhodes?
No.
Senator Favela?
Reservations.
Thank you, members.
Okay, for Waterland Committee, same recommendation, uh, SB 997 to pass with amendments. Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, by, uh, Senator Missalucha for the vote.
SB 997.
As amended.
Chair recommends pass with amendments. Senator Inoue's, uh, aye. Vice Chair Keith Agarant?
Aye.
Senator Missalucha votes with reservation. Senator Rivera?
Aye.
Senator Favela?
No.
Your measure's adopted. Do Chair?
Thank you.
And then moving, moving on to the last, uh, on the agenda, SB 1313 relating to sport fish, Chair's having conferred the recommendation would be to pass 1313, SB 1313 with amendments. We'll clarify in the bill that Department of Ag would only be allowed to issue permits to DLNR for the importation of the northern largemouth bass and butterfly peacock bass into Hawaii. We'll include a July 1st, 2050 effective, effective date. And then we'll also put in the co- uh, committee report that WAM considered to request the funding to fill the vacant fish biologist position for managed Wahihua reservoir activities. Any discussion?
With tech amendments as well to add, yeah, Chair?
Tech amendments, and also with tech amendments. And, okay, so the Chair's votes aye. Vice Chair Nishihara?
Reservations.
Senator Acasio?
Reservations.
Senator Rhodes?
Reservations.
Senator Favela?
Aye.
Thank you, members. Measure passes.
Thank you. For Waterland Committee, same recommendation on SB 1313 with amendments. Chair votes aye.
SB 1313, Chair recommends pass with amendments. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair Keith Agarant?
Aye.
Senator Missalucha votes with reservation. Senator Gil Rivera?
Reservations.
Senator Favela?
Aye. Aye, no.
No, okay. Chair, your recommendations adopted.
And that concludes the joint hearing of AEN and Waterland. Thank you, members. Aloha.
Thank you.